Five to six is the policy direction for new non-renewable fuel cell customer generation. And Mr. Davis is going to make some presentation and ask for some direction. Mr. Davis?
Yes, good evening again, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, Ron Davis, General Manager, Burbank Water and Power. I'll have brief remarks. It's a fairly short staff report, and the issue is really quite narrow. You heard comments earlier tonight concerning the merits of fuel cells. I want to like make it perfectly clear to you and to everyone. The staff supports fuel cells. We do not have a problem with fuel cells. We like what they're doing. We're not arguing what they're doing is bad technology. Our concern is consequences. Consequences. If I were to approve the interconnection agreement, and I have the authority to do that, I then have to come to you for rate increases. Significant rate increases. So we have a five-year rate plan we're handing you as part of the budget, as we always do. We've worked to manage that rate plan, but it's virtually all caused by consequences of negative load growth due to conservation and renewable energy and the addition of renewable energy, whether customer energy or system energy. That's the entire driver for rate increases and has been for some time. But with no growth to offset this, here's what we have to do. We buy the energy in essence by giving a credit on the bill to, say, Disney of nine cents, the energy portion of the bill. And then that's a put on our system. We don't need the energy. So they're building generation, good generation, but it's fossil generation. We're not talking about renewable energy here. Let's be clear. If there's a fossil project including or a renewable project including a fuel cell, we're good with that. We'll work with every customer on it, no matter what it does to rates until we're directed to stop. This is not what we're talking about tonight. We're talking about non-renewable natural gas-fired generation that has a similar CO2 profile to any other modern natural gas-fueled generation. It has other better aspects which puts it ahead in the loading order, if you will, meaning priority, meaning first conservation, then renewable, and then really clean gas. This is really clean gas. Make no mistake about it. Under different circumstances, I'd be here welcoming and recommending it to you. My concern is the impact of putting that $90 a megawatt power as a put on the rate pairs of Burbank when I don't need any of the energy and don't foresee in our forecast due to no growth in Burbank, which is a policy call, just like this is a policy call. So it's not that these devices are bad or these proposals are bad. It's a timing issue. We don't have growth to mitigate it. So we don't need the $90 a power, nine cents a kilowatt, same thing, $90 a megawatt power. So we put it out in the market for at best $30, at best. Many hours, it's negative, and we have to pay someone to take it. Because again, we continue to build generation we don't need to meet renewable mandates. Now, this is non-renewable energy. All I'm suggesting is we defer hooking up non-renewable generation until such time as we need it, so it mitigates the cost to other customers. Otherwise, every megawatt of it that we hook up is a half a million dollars to three-quarters of a million dollars transferred to other customers. Doing a fairly conservative estimate of how many people will want to do this of our large customers, that's a 30 to 40 percent increase in the five-year rate plan we're submitting to council on the 12th. That's 30 to 40 percent increase because to the non-participating customers, all non-participating customers, businesses and residents that don't do this. That's the only problem. If we had growth, even one or two percent, we could simply say, we'll do so many megawatts of this a year. We mitigate it with growth. It works because we need the energy to serve new load. We don't. We have negative load growth. We are out there now selling energy that we're buying from customers in part, renewable energy from customers, that we're buying at large prices and selling it. Sometimes we're paying people to take it. But that's renewable energy. This is not. So the last integrated resource plan this council approved was conservation first, renewable energy next, to meet all growth. That's what's in the resource plan. That's what we've been doing, and that's consistent with the state loading order. The next thing in order would be this energy. But we don't need it, and it's fossil generation. No matter how good it is, it's fossil fuel generation. And that's all we're looking for is direction from you that we would delay, not say no, but defer for now taking on any fossil generation in Burbank until we have sufficient growth to warrant it. That's all. We're not saying no. We're saying not now. Otherwise, it has rate increase consequences just as if it was renewable energy. We understand why customers, large customers, would like to do this. They can get grants to do this. In some places, the generation is needed, and it is preferable energy. Let's be clear, even though it's not green. Like I said, it has the same greenhouse gas footprint as a modern combustion turbine, combined cycle, like Magnolia, same exact greenhouse gas footprint. So it's cleaner, but in greenhouse gas terms, it's a bush. So the only policy decision we'd be making tonight if there were a need for power is what should the greenhouse gas footprint be of allowed fuel cells? That would be a fairly small issue in scope. The bigger issue, however, is one of rates, and a 30 to 40 percent increase in our rate plan, to me, is too material to not come to you in advance before I suffer the consequences by just administratively signing interconnection agreements and then coming to you with needs for rate increases. So we're here tonight to seek your direction, not unjudging the merits of fuel cells. They are a valuable tool. It's that applying that tool in this, at this time in Burbank, given no growth, will have a negative consequence to rate payers that's material, and it's not renewable. This is only talking about fossil generation. So with that, staff seeks council guidance.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Councilmembers have any comments? Councilmember Rick?
Yeah, just two comments. Did you have any discussions with these folks ahead of time by any chance?
Yes.
Okay. And number one, number two is because of the drought and the water savings that these people gave us numbers and stuff like that, did that play in any decision-making along those lines, or it doesn't sound like it really did?
We didn't have that discussion with them, or I'd corrected their understanding. There's not one drop of water savings from adopting fuel cells in Burbank. What they don't understand is that the generation here in Burbank, while it's water-based, it doesn't use one drop of potable water. Even the pure water in those power plants is all recycled water. So the only savings there would be would be recycled water, which we dump in the LA River for the most part. So the water savings in Burbank, in this situation, in your regulatory authority, is no water savings at all. None.
So that water that we dump in the river, we couldn't use that elsewhere in Burbank?
Not in our 50-year plans, in the master plan we gave you. Everything we could do, including giving it to LA, we can't use it all up. It would take a new agreement with Los Angeles to absorb all of our recycled water.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Gableletti, invite Mayor Frutos.
Well, I don't, I disagree with you too often, Mr. Davis. In fact, I can't think of a time when I've disagreed with you. But one thing that I would like to see, two things. One is I would like you to sit down with them again and see if there's any other kind of deal or any kind, any other kind of arrangement that could be made. Because if, if you're saying that fuels, the fuel cell installation will externalize, will increase cost to other rate payers, I'd like to see what that looks like. I'd like to see what that amount is to have a better understanding of how the installation of fuel cells at Disney and IKEA would cause the rates for non-commercial customers or commercial customers who don't use this to go up. I don't doubt it. I'd just like to see the data. Is it a lot? Is it a little? I know what you're saying. You're saying it's significant, but I just would ask, and I'd ask council, and it's up to you as a majority, whether or not we would ask our general manager to go back and meet with the folks who are here. That's number one. Again, number two, what I heard during the public comment was they were talking about renewable resources being used in these fuel cells.
Not true.
And what your report says fossil fuels, and what I heard was biogas, and then I heard natural gas. So to tell you the truth, I don't have a handle on what that means.
Okay. All they wanted to do, I think, was confuse you tonight. In no intent does this report say anything about renewable energy. So if there is the development of a renewable fuel cell, this doesn't address that. We'll do it. Tonight is only the non-renewable ones, meaning if they're natural gas fueled. If they qualify under CEC rules for renewable energy, they qualify done. That is not what we're talking to you about. So if IKEA, who is the one who made the comment, Mr. Grismer, that he wants to work with staff to develop what I think would be the state's first certified renewable fuel cell, I'm in. We'll do that with him. Commitment. That's not at issue tonight. This is only for non-renewable fuel cells. That's all we're talking about. The data on the rate increase is not difficult or tough to do. It is simply the half a million dollars per megawatt. It's, it's just straight-up math of we buy it at nine cents and we sell it at three, and that leaves us with a half a million dollars a megawatt we have to recover from other customers. You can't buy something for nine cents, sell it for three, and break even. It's not going to change meeting with them. It's not going to change because I redo the data. In fact, saying I'm going to sell it for three is being generous. I'm probably going to give it away or pay someone to take it many days of the year. That's what I'm already doing. So saying we'll get three cents for it is frankly giving these projects the benefit of the doubt. We probably won't get any more than three cents for it. So rather than say it's a half a million dollars per megawatt, it's really a half a million to three-quarters of a million per megawatt that will have to shift to other customers.
Councilmember Talamontes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Davis, for your report. But like it was stated, there were some statements made that I'm confused with or weren't addressing in the report. Can this be a renewable and sustainable way of doing things? Fuel cells, can they be renewable and sustainable?
Fuel cells can be, can be renewable if you use renewable fuel rather than natural gas. That is not-
That's not a proposal we're dealing with tonight.
I am not asking for policy direction on that. I think that direction's crystal clear. If it were a renewable fuel cell, I'm not in front of you. I'm approving the interconnection. Okay?
So that's not, that's not being proposed.
It's not an issue. If there is a renewable fuel cell proposal, I'm happy to sign it. That unless you tell me to stop signing renewable energy.
But the question, or the comment was that it can be renewable.
Let's do it. I'm in. That is not what we're looking for direction on. Only the non-renewable ones, meaning the ones who burn natural gas.
So the use of biogas?
Renewable energy.
Renewable energy.
Assuming it qualifies under the CEC guidebook.
And now we're talking about natural gas.
Tonight, we're only talking about pipeline natural gas, same thing we burn in Magnolia. Staff is not seeking direction on anything to do with renewable energy.
And I read somewhere in the report that the gas company's giving some grants?
Gas company is giving very large grants. That's part of what motivates this.
The incentive to make it happen.
Yes. And frankly, in other places, not in Burbank, there's good reason why the state regulator of the investor-owned utility says this is good policy. There's place where there's congestion in the electric grid in California. There's places where the grid needs to be upgraded for reliability. And distributed generation, even natural gas-fired generation, can help with that, with reliability and relieving congestion. There was a time in Burbank, 16, 17 years ago, when that would have been true here. It is not true today. Today, you have literally the most reliable grid in the state of California and among the most in the world, certainly among the most in North America. So we, it won't help us here, but it could very well be true, is true in fact, in investor-owned utility service areas, that there's areas where their grid has congestion and fuel cells, distributed generation, even those that burn natural gas are a public good, meaning they'll help solve a problem. If I had that problem, I'd be in front of you. But as you know, our reliability is almost unparalleled.
So when the comment is made that it's good elsewhere, why isn't it good here in Burbank? Is that comparing apples to oranges?
Apples to oranges because we don't need energy and we don't have reliability problems. So therefore, all it does is add to greenhouse gases and rate increases at this time.
Now, is Glendale using this currently?
Glendale approved one. We called them and asked them about it because there were some debates over CEQA, over having an environmental impact statement. And Glendale says, yes, that got done as a pilot. It's not happening again.
Oh.
So they, they, they will go through process, I'm told. That's just what I'm told, if and when fuel cells come there. But again, they're different. I understand Glendale has 3 percent load growth. That's what I understand. If that were true in Burbank, again, I would be in front of you, but for not because of the issue of rate impact, because we'd have growth to absorb the energy. I'd only be talking to you about what level of CO2 should be required of those who are going to put fuel cells in Burbank. Same issue as we would have if I were building generation in Burbank. It's just CO2. And that's a question the PUC is asking itself for those it regulates this year. But that isn't my issue. I wish that was the issue. I like fuel cells. I want to say yes. These are good customers. They really are. Disney's a great customer, not a good customer. To tell them no is not first order of business. But coming to you with saying yes to something that adds to CO2 emissions and drives up electric rates for everyone who doesn't get the deal, that's pretty tough public policy.
And the reason it drives up the rates is because there's less of our generation being used?
No, no. It's because I have too much generation now.
Okay.
So it's not that there's less generation being used. You're buying generation you have no use for. The only thing you can do with it is resell it to somebody else. It's like you already got too much inventory in your store, and someone brings you more, and you pay it. And the only way you can do it is sell it wholesale to somebody for pennies on the dollar. That's what we would be doing. We would buy, be buying inventory at nine cents and at best selling it at three. That can only have one impact. You lose money.
So what about agreeing to additional fees? Has that discussion been had? Where the companies agreed to paying fees to the-
No.
No one?
No.
No discussion?
No. You mean to offset the loss of money on the energy?
Right.
No. The only thing that's happened is we made it clear to them that we have for many years had standby charges to pay for the demand charge. Cost recovery, we don't recover otherwise. But as far as the energy charge, no. I think without the revenue, it was made clear to me, they won't do this, meaning without the nine cents being paid, that these deals won't happen. They need the nine cents to make it economic for them. The problem is it's uneconomic for the system. I can move money around, but I can't manufacture money. I only get it from rate payers. And this is losing money, and talking about it's not going to change it.
So the comment that was made about using results in water reduction?
Simply not true.
What water reduction?
There is no water reduction. We use no potable water except for people on that entire site, not for the fountains, not for the power plants. Even the pure water is made from recycled water. We make it right there on the site into pure water. We don't use any, any potable water in power generation in Burbank.
Now, you were asked about, have you met with both parties?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
Had this dialogue, just as we're having it on consequences with Disney. Did not have it quite this way with IKEA. They had indicated their, they had a desire to move on to a renewable project, and Mr. Somuano sent them emails saying, we're good with that. We look forward to working with you. And we still do. We look forward to working with them. If they will commit to doing a qualified renewable resource, not some undefined project where you can bait and switch to regular gas later, but a truly defined natural gas, non-natural gas, truly biofuel California, CEC Commission certified unit, I'm good. Not even certified, just California CEC qualified, meaning meet the rules of the guidebook put out by the-
So do you feel these grants were driving some of those decisions?
Totally, they are.
Okay.
The grants are driving this. And there are places where those grants are properly applied. Like I said, if I had reliability problems in Burbank, if we needed load met by generation in Burbank, this is better than building new natural gas generation. This is better than if we were buying natural gas generation from marketers. This is better. I would tell you, stop buying it from marketers and buy this. But we have stopped buying all our power from marketers. We don't do that. We've absorbed it all. I'm ramping down our own generation, not only at night to minimums, but on peak now to minimums because of all the renewable we're accepting without load growth. It's just a situational problem of without growth to offset it, you have no place to take expensive power. And this power costs three times what natural gas-generated fuel, fuel power can be bought for. That's another way of saying it, meaning if we went out and bought this power, we could buy it for a third of the cost we'd be paying Disney or IKEA.
But I would agree with Councilmember Gableletti's request. I'd like to see the figures as well. You know, we have had a great relationship with Disney and IKEA as well. Disney for many, many years and IKEA for the last few years that they've been here. We've had great relationships, and I wouldn't want those relationships to strain just on this one issue. It's unfortunate if it, if it came to that, but-
Well, it's strained, and I can't make it go away. I'm gonna have to ask you for rate increases.
That's what my request was earlier, to have the city manager and you meet, and I was told that-
Okay, I'll meet.
They had already met with one, but I just confirmed it from you that you met with both.
Yes, I have. And I'm happy to meet with them, but the economics are not going to change because I meet with them, unless they're willing to take less than nine cents.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Frutos.
Just one question, Mr. Davis. Both Disney and IKEA brought up standby power charges.
Yes.
Can you explain how that would benefit members of the public to keep the rates lower than the 30 to 40 percent, or it just wouldn't?
That's already been taken care of. We have two kinds of charges for large customers. We have demand charges and energy charges. In smaller customers like you and I for our home, we just bundle it into one charge and call it energy, and it's about 15 cents a kilowatt. The larger customers like IKEA or Disney pay a demand charge, and they, they pay an energy charge. The demand charge is for some fixed costs. The energy charge is for all energy, which has a fixed and unbearable component. So when you ask them to pay the standby charge, you're asking them to say, I will pay because when my fuel cell doesn't work or I need it worked on, you're instantly going to pick up my load. So to prevent customers from fuel switching on you and having it borne by other rate payers, utilities adopt standby charges. For renewable energy, those are by law forgiven from the PUC because we just want to encourage renewable energy. For non-renewable energy, there is no such exclusion. This is non-renewable energy. So we charge the standby charges. I can tell you that neither party was happy with that, although Disney accepted it, as I recall, pretty matter-of-factly. On the other hand, IKEA bitterly opposed to it. Bitterly. And so no matter what conversation I have with them, it doesn't go well in terms of IKEA. Disney, on the other hand, was very reasonable in understanding our problem, just wants to do this, and I don't blame them. I would want to do it if I were them too. I have one issue I hope you know, and that's consequences economically to non-participating customers from paying too much for something I have no use for.
Thank you.
Mr. Davis, correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding is that the state of California is using taxpayer dollars to heavily encourage by subsidies this type of fuel cell development.
That is correct. In fact, it's a tariff now of the gas company.
Okay. And I think that there's two items about direction. One, item one states maintain existing energy policy of meeting electric demand with conservation and renewable energy, which is the existing policy I think you outlined briefly earlier in your comments. And that results in us, to paraphrase your comments earlier, in a previous meeting, energy we don't want and we don't need.
Yes, sir.
And you're doing, that's because of policy of the council that you're following.
And the state of California.
Right. Well, we'll deal with them later. I'm talking about the-
I just don't want to leave them out. They count too.
Okay, I'll include them, okay? Then the second one is your request. It's more immediate to the discussion tonight, which is defer consideration of allowing clean fossil fuel generation from fuel cells until such time as there's sustained electric growth in the city. Do we have any forecast as when that might occur?
No. Our forecast that we just revised, which is part of what leads us to tonight, is we have seen a decline in energy sales the last few years. That's very real, and we haven't put it in rates. We keep talking to you about it when I come with budgets, but I say I'm going to subsidize with cash one more year. Well, this year's the last year when I come to you on the 12th. I just can't keep it up. It's not coming back. It's not the economy. It's conservation and renewable energy. When you add in what we are continued to commit to do with conservation, we see loads staying at best flat and less policy about growth changes, which is, you will have to answer for me. I can't answer for you. If I observe what's been going on and project it forward, at best, net electric load in Burbank at best is flat. It's probably, continues to be slightly negative.
So the true direction you'd like from us tonight is defer consideration. Now, is there a need for you to have a direction, or can you make this decision on your own? You just want-
I can make it on my own.
Good.
I mostly need to have you understand that I will be doing that.
Okay. Well, I'd like to suggest two things. There's two points, one and two, under policy direction. I'm very respectful and understanding, I think, of the desire of Disney and IKEA to be as conservation-minded and energy-efficient as possible. I believe I understand the circumstances and the motivations for doing it, and I commend them, as you did. On the other hand, we do need to balance, from my perspective, the impacts on the rate payers. I don't know, as Mr. Davis stated, that meeting again on this exact same topic with the exact same circumstances will change it. I don't know that Mr. Davis would refuse to meet with them if they so desired to do so.
Happy to.
Yeah. I don't know if there's any resolution under the grants that are, or the incentives that are being proposed by the state to fix this. So from my perspective, what we need to do in the council, and I do it respectfully to the parties that are concerned with this, is to support the request for a direction on deferring consideration of allowing clean fossil fuel generation from fuel cells until such time as sustained electric growth. I intend to do everything I can, the remaining years I have in the council, to make sure we do have increased growth in the city, which will increase that demand that you're looking for. And I think there are ways that the council can do that with staff and direction. But I'd also like to state to the council that I'm going to renew my call, and I'm going to ask for it to come back at the appropriate time for consideration. We need to revisit our city's policy on renewables. If the state is using taxpayers' dollars to encourage the use of non-renewable fuels, such as natural gas, which is historically low now in cost, which should have a tremendous positive impact as far as I'm concerned in the utility's bottom line, then I think we need to look at it and maybe defer or set aside some of the dictates, I don't use the word dictate, from the state on this, because I think it's hurting our citizens, and I think it's hurting our city, and I think it's hurting our utility. And it's not due to anything the representatives of IKEA and Disney are doing. It's from coming from the state. And I'm prepared to have a very serious discussion about changing course on our policies with respect to natural gas alone and perhaps others. So I'd ask council if they wish to, would we need a motion on this, or just as a-
We have it as note and file, so it's-
Okay. Could I have a motion for note and file this presentation? Councilmember Gableletti?
I'll make the notion for, notion for note and file.
You can make the notion or a motion. We'll take either one at this hour.
Going to need a notion and acknowledge the willingness of Mr. Davis to continue to meet with the, yes, ma'am?
It was number five, his note and file, the Burbank Financial Reserves. This one is provide policy direction?
Yes.
That's my apology. I thought you were discussing number five. Sorry.
Well, let me restate that. I'm going to recommend that we maintain existing energy policy, meaning electric demand with conservation and renewable energy, and defer the consideration of allowing clean fossil fuel generation from fuel cells until such time as there is sustained electric growth in the city.
in the city, and can ask our general manager to sit down again with the people who took the time to come here tonight from IKEA and from Disney and see if there's some other resolution at some point in the future.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Gabletti, I'm going to ask you to bifurcate your motion.
Why?
Because I am going to vote no on maintaining our current policy, and I do wish to vote yes on deferring consideration of what he's asking for. So I can vote yes on two. I'm going to vote no on one. So if you bifurcate it, you'll get support.
Will you vote yes on three, which was to ask our general manager to, to meet again with IKEA and-
Trifurcate it.
All right. So we'll do one separately, maintain existing energy policy of meeting electric demand with conservation and renewable energy.
Second.
Motion and second. Can we call the roll on that one?
Well, before you take the vote, I'll hold my arguments for another time, Mayor, because you're off-base on moving to non-renewable.
It's not the first time I've been accused of that, but I still ask them to come back for the further discussion, Mr. Scott, if we can. Okay, so we have a motion and a second on number one, to maintain existing energy policy of meeting electric demand with conservation and renewable energies. Further discussion? Vice Mayor Frutos?
So a no vote on one would basically mean this is going to come back with further discussion?
No.
No?
No? To talk about our energy?
I've asked them on separate item to bring it back at appropriate time.
Could I help with that, maybe? We have brought you a draft, a final draft, Integrated Resource Plan, to update the '06 plan. We presented it to council six weeks ago. I don't remember the exact date. Somebody behind me may. But it was a few weeks ago. And we will be coming back to you with the final. And that's, I forget which date, but that's scheduled. So we're bringing it back to you as, for your consideration and direction. So it's, it's scheduled to come back before you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. That was very quick.
The council member, Vice Mayor Frutos, my understanding with no vote on the motion on number one is that it's time for change, that the people are taking it in the shorts. We're paying millions of dollars extra for these renewables, when apparently the state will allow natural gas to be used under certain circumstances. So we got to get with the state and tell them the people of Burbank have had enough. And we're not going to pay 20 and 30 and 40 percent increases because somebody in Sacramento or someplace else thinks it's a good idea, when we have these fuels, and they're readily available, they're very cost-effective, and they're relatively clean. That's my position, and if I'm off-base, we can figure that out. But in any case, that's why I'm voting no on that motion. Further discussion?
But you are going to carry the fight to Sacramento.
Absolutely.
I will. I hear you. I'll be with you.
Good. Thank you.
I look forward to the ongoing discussion. I would encourage a yes vote on this, and then we will have this whole issue before us in just a few weeks.
Motion and second. Now, city clerk, you call the roll.
Councilmember Gabletti?
Yes.
Councilmember Talamontes?
Yes.
Councilmember Bright?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Frutos?
No.
And Mayor Gordon?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's three to two on one, and now if you have a second motion.
All I can say is good luck. The motion is to defer consideration of allowing clean fossil fuel generation from fuel cells until such time as there is sustained electric growth in the city, and to further direct our general manager to continue to meet with IKEA and Disney representatives, trying to achieve a renewable fuel portfolio as part of the fuel cells.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Councilmember Bright?
Yeah, I'll support it because of the general manager's, say he'd be more than happy to meet with them again. I understand where you're coming from, but I guess extending the olive branch, meeting with them one more time, that's fine. You've offered to do that, so I'll, that's why I'll vote for it. Otherwise, I was going to say I would just prefer to move forth what was in front of us, but because your willingness to meet with them again, I'll support it.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Vice Mayor Frutos?
I'd just like to acknowledge both Disney and IKEA in trying to work on better, cleaner energy for the city and the environment. But because of what I've learned since I've been on council, that we are 33 percent currently renewable energy, and this is a community, municipal utility that we work with everybody, I just want to be upfront with you. I cannot see myself passing on a 30 to 40 percent rate increase when I consider you part of the city family.